I also ordered the work session of the Hillgrove School District Board of Directors at 5:27 and we will welcome our guests and our first item of business is the dual-language strategic report with Adria and Arsen.
To introduce you all, we have the Director of Multilingual Programs is Arsen Icnavar. This is her role as Director of Multilingual Programs. For those of you that have been around a little while, once upon a time, this role was combined with our elementary teaching and learning role and she had to do both jobs, which was a... And so luckily through some funding through a House Bill grant and it was really focused on supporting for our language learners, we were able to structure this role and she's been doing it for the last four years and an amazing job and really supporting multiple areas for multilingual learners to foster. She's going to share a little bit with you about our dual-language program and what we were able to do last year in an analysis of that program specifically to think about what we need to do for her to consider in a dual-language program. You know, when we're going through a tighter budgetary time, we do need to always make improvements, being very mindful of being targeted in those instances. So she did an exceptional job finding some partners in it and being able to analyze the program in both a quantitative way but also in a systematic way, which I think we always talk about head and heart work and maybe that was what really this analysis was about and it was great to be able to find and support us in this network. So I'm going to turn it over to her because she is the one that knows the thing.
Thank you for having me. This is one of my favorite topics, not only favorites, one of my favorite topics. Before we get into the findings or the insights from the dual-language strategic analysis, I'd like to have a, just do a little review about our multilingual program. And for those of you that are new, we wanted to make sure that you have context so that you understand where we're coming from. So we really root ourselves into four different branches and one is equity, assuring that our students have equitable outcomes. The other one is focused in the community and making sure that our students get the language acquisition that they need at the level that they're at in order for them to be able to actually be proficient. And also providing them the support in their course classes, so math, social studies, science, and so on and so forth. Also sheltering instruction, which means is providing the specific tools and strategies that they need in order to be able to be successful and reach that academic river that they need to reach, whether or not they're proficient in English or even Spanish for our dual-language program. Then is our bilingual education, which that includes our dual-language program, which is what we're going to be talking about today. We have a Spanish literacy program too and our goal there is to be able to get as many kids as we can to earn the seal of bilinguism by the time they graduate high school. And that's a state award that they receive for showing evidence of proficiency in dual languages or more. And then, so that's where we center and that's where we focus on. Today, our purpose is to share the major findings from the dual-language analysis, celebrate some of our program strengths and community impact, and we're also going to be highlighting two priority opportunities for growth that we are going to be starting with, and that's data systems for analysis and creation of a multilingual platform. This is our equity focus. We know that analyzing and implementation of dual-language programs, that is, strategic report, is critical equity work because it directly addresses an improved tangible outcomes for multilingual learners by establishing a clear data-informed path to success. The number here, so here is our mission statement, which was created by our previous committee that we had that we started working with in 2017. Our number has actually, is actually higher than this. When we pulled the number, all of our little kindergartners had not been quoted yet. So our number is actually 3,706. And it's where we are, we are where we were when we, actually a little bit higher than where we were when we ended the year last year, so that's exciting. And our goal is to guide students to achieve academic excellence through the power of bilingualism and cultural competency for success in a diverse global society. And we also, really, we center ourselves and root ourselves on the research and the guiding principles of dual-language is a document that provides us with research under the seven strengths that you see on the slideshow. And each of those strengths provides us with research and a rubric that helps us monitor our program as we move forward. And the main three goals that we also, we're also rooted on are making sure that our students become bilingual and bilinguist, that they achieve academic excellence, and then the third one is that they, that we're able to build their social-cultural competency as they're moving along in our program. And this is our dual-language program in HSP. You'll see that we have each of our elementary, we started in 2003, so it's been a journey of over 20 years. And our program's last division closed in 2025 by the expansion of our dual-language program to all four high schools. And this, in 2025, we were able to graduate a cohort of dual-language students at each of the high schools. So currently, we have students from pre-kind, kinder, all the way to high school in a dual-language program. In the italic font, you see all the Spanish literacy programs. As you can see, not every theater has the same number of dual-language schools, however, we have seen that another way that we concern our students is providing them with Spanish literacy in their elementary years. And so these, all of the schools that have a little star next to them, they're providing Spanish literacy to the students K-6. And when these students come into middle school, they have the opportunity to join dual-language and so they then get into the dual-language program, starting in sixth grade all the way to 12th grade. That has really helped each of our middle schools recruit and retain dual-language students that are ready to be a part of the program.
Just clarifying question. So then, is the Spanish literacy program different than the dual-language program? Just a small, maybe a smaller subset, right?
They have from 30 to 45 minutes of Spanish literacy instruction every single day. And it is prioritized for the students who are active English learners and speak Spanish. We have often said, if there's room for students who are heritage speakers of Spanish or students who didn't qualify for English, for ESL, but they speak Spanish, that is also another option. But it's primarily for students who are active English learners. So, but research shows that if you fortify their native language, they're going to do better in English. And so, and that has been the case. All right, so, total evaluations. In 2014, we had Ed North West come and conduct an audit. And in that audit, what it highlighted was that students in grades eight through 10 perform as well or better than their counterparts. In 2017, we had Enriquecer, which is another organization that came in from New Mexico, and they facilitated a two-day retreat with admin and teacher leaders to evaluate the dual-language program. And so it provided us with guidance on how to, based on what we learned from each other and the program, we were able to then prioritize some goals, such as extending to all secondary. That was one, and articulating the languages per grade level and content for elementary. And that really helped us to provide a better service for our students through this program. And then the last thing we, with the last evaluation has been the one that we did this year with the Canisales. This was a wrap-up of that House Bill Yale Outcome Grant that we got for four years. We were able to use some of that in Title III to be able to contract with them so that they could come and do that analysis. And then, the last thing, but not the least, since 2015, we began building a Grow Your Own program. It was formerly known as the Woo Scholars and now it's a bilingual diverse educator pathways program. And here, we recruit students in high school to, that are interested in becoming educators and then we help them apply for college and we support them to go to college. And then, in the summers, they come and they teach with our teachers and build those skills. 2020, we hired the first cohort. So, so far, we've hired 16 teachers, one counselor, and 24 classified staff. And in 2024, this year, we have 14. And these are scholars that come and they do tutoring during the day or after school, specifically for literacy. So that's what we're, and some of them are assistants in our buildings as well. We have, we currently have 86 bilingual and diversity care pathways scholars. And we're also recruiting 20 more. Every year, we recruit 20 more. And I guess that they even run a time of bilingual enrichment program. We're very proud of this program. We're seeing a lot of success, specifically with the students that are now teachers who, in their first years, in their first year, we see that they don't struggle as much as others when they come with no experience. So that has been very helpful. So, celebrating and visioning, we're just going to, I'm still going to review a little bit of the things that we're able to accomplish from 2017 to 2025. I'm not going to read the whole list for you, but I want to highlight a few things that we were able to accomplish. And so, like I had said, some of the things that we accomplished were the articulation of the languages for grade level for elementary. Before that, we didn't know when people were teaching math in Spanish or literacy in Spanish or English. And we were, so with this, we were able to articulate that so that we're all doing the same thing from middle school. All of our bilingual, all of our resources that we've adopted since then, we have been adopted bilingually and that has been an asset for our program and also for the whole district. We have hired all admin for our dual-language schools that are bilingual, so they're able to not only, not only lead in a bilingual educator, but they're also able to give feedback based on, you know, instruction in Spanish versus English, and most of them have experience working in dual-language programs. And then, we also added ten additional elementary schools that are not dual but are providing Spanish literacy.
What are the content areas that are still not, this is almost all content areas, which ones are we still not writing?
I think it's all now. Yeah, we had the four R, we had, no, they're all now, sorry, I should have updated that. Thank you, thank you for asking us. And then secondary, we have expanded to all middle and high school. We have articulated Spanish language arts, which has been an asset. All of our secondary schools are utilizing the curriculum, they're collaborating with each other. Like I said, the four cohorts have graduated this year. And the seal, the state seal of bilinguism has increased, more students are receiving. And all of our additions, all of our new additions that have been bilingual.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
The curriculum for the dual-language program, is that on the same seven-year cycle?
Every, whenever we do a cycle for any content area, it's included. And our request to all the curriculum companies is that we are looking for bilingual curriculum. And we've actually made a difference in just the impact in the state with some of our curriculum companies because we've said no to them and then they come back and they're like, we're ready. And they've actually have not only helped us, but have helped other districts as well. And so I know that we're one of, one of the more districts are doing the same thing where they're like saying, no, if it's not bilingual, we're not buying it. And so they're hearing that and now they're changing there, even for secondary. And this is the number of students that have earned their seal. And as you can see, in 2019, we had 54 and this year, we had 214. And there were 13 languages in 2025. So it's not just in Spanish. We've, I just want to acknowledge Anna Buste, who's here, she's a dual-language tutor. She has done an amazing job helping all of our high schools.
Recruit?
Yeah, recruit students who are bilingual and not in dual, who can earn the seal of bilinguism. And it's a lot of work, we're talking about that today. It's a lot of work, but we have seen the success of like, of all of that work, her and every dual-language coordinator and world language department leader at every one of the high schools helping us with all of that. We've also established awards at each third grade, at sixth grade, and eighth grade, just to encourage the students to continue with dual-language and that has also been successful.
So, the 214, those are for Spanish?
13 languages, about, maybe 90% are Spanish and then the other ones are other languages.
So, the other languages that you're talking about, is that typically then people who are dual-language at home and they just have enough familiarity to be able to read and write in the language, even though the instruction has obviously?
Been in English, yeah. Yes, these are students who are bilingual and they have had education either at home or somewhere, somehow, in their career, in their K-12 career. And we encourage them to take the assessment and even if they don't feel good, they're like, don't try it. And when they do, they realize that, you know, they don't have to score proficient on the assessment, they have to score high intermediate, which is still not easy. But they have to score high intermediate on both.
But our dual-language program is still just Spanish, English, right?
Yeah. All right, so K-12, we've been able to establish a dual-language stipend, our bilingual stipend, funding for collaboration. We have started a dual-language family summit, we've done it for two years, and this last year, we had over 600 people attend. These are, a picture of our scholars in the summer who came and worked at all of our summer schools, not just CEP, but they worked at all of them. And we got them together and took a picture of them. And we have a bilingual enrichment program that also has expanded. It used to be the migrant summer school, remember that? And now it's a bilingual enrichment program. It has, it is open to English learners, migrant students, and dual-language students. So where do we go next? So now, we're going to talk about the analysis. So, the Canisales groups, I say the ladies because they're a trio of three sisters. And what we really appreciated from them was the humanity that they bring, as well as all of their experience. At least, well, I think two of them have been involved in education. One of them has been an administrator at different levels. And so, they brought that insight into the analysis. So, we contracted with them, they were open to do both the qualitative and the quantitative research in our, with our program. And they divided it into three main phases. One was interview. We selected 10 people from dual-language schools where they were not going to visit and some from the HSP and they had a one-hour interview with each of them. And they, based on that, I'll talk more about it later, but they were able to get that feedback and create some themes that came out of that. And then, there was a data analysis. We each, we dumped them with a bunch of data that we had and they analyzed that data for us. And then, the site visited, they visited five schools. One was a Spanish literacy school and the other four were dual-language schools. And I mentioned, and at each of the schools, we did classroom visits, they spoke, they had focal groups with students, with staff, and with families. So in phase one, they, like I said, they interviewed 10 people and these were some of the questions that came out of that, that were asked. So for instance, what makes them ought to be in a dual-language program in a district? And how is it meeting the needs of students? What are the main challenges or barriers of success for the program? What do you believe are the key areas of growth? And so, all the responses that they gathered from these interviews, they then also, they analyzed them and also included them with all of the data that they got from the focal During phase two, oh, it's just one more thing about interviews, is that they interviewed teachers, administrators, teachers and administrators mainly, and a tutor from there. In phase two, it was the data analysis. Some of the things that came up that we want to highlight are that they found that students are gaining ground over time while their growth initially is lower in English. In the primary grades, they are closing the gap steadily through strong growth, particularly in the upper grades. We also noticed that Latino students in non-dual programs show an average growth of 9.68% on the English, where students in dual-language are showing a slightly higher growth, 10.12 per year, with the added layer of the political and environmental and literacy. And in the elementary, Spanish literacy students enrolling in secondary DLP programs show similar growth as students in dual-second, secondary school. So, we looked at the student pathway between, the dual-language pathways for students who are in the program and then they looked at the Spanish literacy that go into dual-language and they were very impressed, like, to see that the students were growing at the same rate, whether, regardless of whether they were in Spanish or they were in dual-language. And then, the graduation rates for Latino students in dual-language programs are significantly higher than their non-dual-language peers. And if you can see the chart there, we wanted to highlight all of the difference. So for HSP, our graduation rate is 87.5%. For our Latino, Latina, Latinx students, not in dual, is 75%. But if you're a Latino, Latina, Latinx student in dual, it's 92%. For our non-Latino, Latino, Latinx DLP students, it's 100%. It is a small number, it's about 16 students, but everything graduated. So all of our dual-language students, graduation rate is 93.3%, which is higher than the state, higher than the district. So, this also, you know, it reassures us that we're doing the right thing and it's good for our students.
The challenge is that our grad rate in HSP for students identified Latino, Latino, Latinx is 86.2%. And so, our grad rate is, the disparity between all and Latino students is down to one percentage point in terms of an achievement gap. And so, this plus this equals that rate. And so, if you look at our school districts minus a dual-language program, we would see a larger disparity in our grad rates. So one of the huge celebrations for me is that a culturally responsive, linguistically responsive program, like dual-language, and literacy at so many different schools, leads to gap closure as far as our outcomes. So we should be super proud in HSP of our gap closure. It's a huge success for us for the last 10 years. Thank you.
I have one question. Of the 3,706, if I got that number right, what percentage of those students are Latino? Sorry, of the 3,706 students that we have, how many of those are Latino, Latinx, and non?
About 95%.
95% are?
Yeah.
I'm very curious, if 95% of the dual-language program is Spanish, and you said there were 13 languages, could you give us?
That's different. So, the seal of bilinguism is open to anyone, anyone can apply.
So, the 13 languages are actually coming from the?
Dual-language is just Spanish and English?
Just Spanish and English, thank you.
We wish those kids will come. But we're helping our students who are bilingual to access that, the seal of bilinguism. All right, so phase three was the school visits and that was just great, that was so great. We went to Rich Hazel, Reedville, McKinney, Evergreen, and Hill High. And the following trends were patterns observed in 20 or 20, more than 20 classrooms across all schools. So, some of the themes that we saw were that peer-to-peer collaboration was a highlight in almost all of the classrooms. Safe communities in classrooms that foster speaking students felt safe to ask questions, to share thoughts was very evident. And strong language fidelity, teachers stick to the language that they're teaching in and that really helps our program be strong in that sense. We, you see at the, at the end of every classroom visit, we got together and we gathered all of our observations and then we were able to put them in categories and that helped to give them some of the themes that came up out of those observations. And that was just one illustration of that. And then, student voice, so the focus groups were made up of students between fourth grade and 12th grade. And the students in some of our schools, in that specific school at McKinney, they were all Spanish-speaking students because they're, it's a Spanish literacy program, so they were all native Spanish speakers or, you know, or heritage Spanish speakers. In our dual-language schools, though, we have students from multiracial representation, so there were not just Spanish-speaking students, there were students that were English-native speakers, that came from multiracial families that are in the program. And the themes that came out of that were family heritage and cultural connections. And under each of these themes, I added a quote that a student, that reflected what the students were saying about that. So, for that one, my grandma is from Nicaragua and so that I can speak to her more, none of my parents speak Spanish at home. So that's how the program helps with their heritage. Bilingual recognition and celebration matters. We start in sixth grade, we actually started in third grade. They were happy to hear that we started in third grade, to prepare for our medals so that when we get to be seniors, we get that seal. And then, students see their participation in dual-language as valuable for their current reality. And let me step back to that. Mis papas, my parents, they wanted me to be in Spanish literacy para que pudiera ser bilingüe y un doctor. And I can be a translator porque dijeron que cuando sea más grande puedo tener un buen trabajo. So they're saying that their parents wanted to be bilingual and be a doctor and to be a translator so that when they grow up, they could get a good job. And with the families, it was the same thing. Principals invited families that came from different backgrounds to the family focus. And their themes that came out from that were dual-language for cultural identity and multilingualism. So one example is, my wife is Chinese and does not speak her language and we didn't want our kids to go through that. This is a multiracial family where the mom is Chinese, the dad is Latino, and so they wanted the kids to have their language, at least in Spanish, through the dual-language program. Strong social bonds and community in dual-language programs. I can name all the dual kids through the years because their class I can name all the dual kids through the years because they're classmates from different years. And then perception of dual as high-quality education. The program goes beyond learning language. It's about building cultural awareness and academic strength. And then the staff focus groups, those were mainly dual language staff members, some classified, some support staffs that were invited to this, to these focus group conversations. And one was strong sense of community for collaboration among D L staff. An example is our staff is special, the team collaboration makes the program. Appreciation for cultural celebrations and student recognition. Dia de los Niños was a four-day celebration, even kids not in dual participated. And personal connection to bilingualism and community. Back in the day, we didn't speak Spanish, it was all English and only my grandparents spoke Spanish. I am very fond of our program and love seeing students grow. This is a staff member who was here when they were in elementary and in K twelve. Pride in the program's access, impact and cultural relevance. I feel that it is an important, an amazing opportunity to honor their native language and culture. And it's also, and it also helps their English development. It's a superpower. The last thing we did after all of that, they came back a few weeks later and we did a retreat. And in that retreat, we, a group of us here at the district, our school support, part of school support and some of our Tosas, we analyzed with them all of the data that they had collected. And we pretty much, they had us create some recommendations based on these three different topics. One was family engagement, staff capacity and student outcomes and experiences. Then they took all of that data and about a month after that, a month and a half after that, they provided us with a report and that's linked on that top, on the top picture. If you want to click on it, you can see the report. We had, we got the report like on Tuesday and Wednesday, we presented it to all of our administrators, the whole district. And we analyzed it. They looked at something that they can take from the report as a next step for their building. And then they also identified what aligned to their own site or department's goal. And so the next steps, the two primary steps that we need to prioritize in all of this is creating a dual language task, task force to help us go into the report and really analyze all of the recommendations and create some goals for the next five years maybe so that we can have another round of work to work, you know, to go to and, and, you know, get to. And the other piece was the multilingual data analysis system. We gave them a lot of data, but it was hard for the data to be seen with a dual language lens. And so one of the major recommendations was to, to create an analysis, data analysis team to help us ensure that we get the data, that the data is timely, that it's able, that we're able to see it with that lens in a, in a way that is accessible to all of our administrators, to all of us. And we're able to track the growth of our dual language students in a better way. And so those are the two things that we're prioritizing. These are some of the things that we've already done. We've also have presented it to our O S P team, so that should have a check. And we are, we are planning to go out into our community partners and present what dual languages for us. And that was another thing is that we need to be more transparent about the program to our community, to, to our partners so they're able to be able to find, do in supporting in any way that they can, be able to provide that to our families as well and our students. And that's it. Questions?
I always love celebrating our Grow Your Own program. I didn't realize the numbers were as high as they were. So that's amazing. So first, great job. Second, question, do we have enough data at this point? So when we talk with teachers, longevity, teacher burnout, three years is sometimes cited as the average that teachers stay around because they're frustrated with the profession or whatever. Do we, do we have enough data that the Grow Your Own students that we end up hiring make it past that milestone? Or is it, is no difference for them?
No, it's, they, well, we've had, the first cohort we hired was in two thousand twenty, they're all still here. And so it's been five years. Again, when they come in the summer, they make connections with mentor teachers. Travis, before Mike, now Travis goes and visits them every year too. We gather them at Western, but we're not just serving kids at Western. So we bring the kids from the other universities and they, and then he comes and speaks to them, he speaks to them as well. So they have, they have that connection. So when they come in, they already know they can call our SEMA, they can call, you know, they're connected with Bruce, they're connected with our Toses. And so having that is huge as a new teacher. You're not, you know, you're not alone. And now our, like our cohorts that we hired in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, these teachers have also become mentors to the ones that are in the program. And so they go and they like connect with them at different times. Whenever we have meetings virtually, we invite them or when we go and visit them, we invite them as well. So there's, there's a lot of connection and that helps them to like stay in the profession. And some of them are starting to look at like, what other opportunities can I have? Do I want to become a principal? Do I want to become, you know, a teacher on special assignment? Some of them want to go into counseling, they love counseling. I think we've created that actually. And so, yeah, so it's exciting to see that. Definitely that, keep them.
I do want to say sincere thank you for bringing this information to us. This is the detail behind the excitement. When you open up the program on graduation and you see the number of students that have been granted, that it is really staggering every high school that we get to see. And we, I always go to there and see the number of kids that are getting these dual language. And it's really exciting, but you don't know where that comes from. I didn't know that. And I didn't know how long they're going through the program. And so this is like the, the ingredients and the baking of the cake, if you will. And then we get to give them the, you know, the jacket and they, they're like, ah. So thank you very much. It's, it's exciting. And then this time, we need excitement. So thank you.
Thank you for your support. I think without the support of the board, it would be a hard thing, especially in these times. You know, it's hard. And so thank you for all the support that you give us to be able to continue. The program is for you guys, Travis, to continue working and doing what's best for students and really leveraging their assets and their, and their gifts, you know, because this is what we're doing with this program. It was, we're leveraging their gifts and assets that others may not see. We're uplifting that and, and that's amazing. Aside from the seal, we also give our students a bilingual recognition. So students who cannot meet the seal, they still get their bilingual recognition for showing evidence in at least two domains of the four domains such as reading, listening, speaking and writing. If they can give evidence in two, we give them that recognition certificate that they get as well. The seal goes under transcript and that then helps them get credit for college. It also allows them to enroll into higher level Spanish classes. And also they can show it to future employers, employees.
All right, I wanted to ask how the process was for getting advanced classes to be in dual language. How is that going?
So every high school provides A P Spanish, A P Spanish or I V Spanish for our dual language students. We have, I think we have a few I V core classes in Espanol in science. And I think we have, we have A P? No, which is the A P literature in Spanish. And so with those courses, our students are able to get credit for college and, you know, and get it under transcript.
Is there any sign of progress in getting classes in science and math and dual language for at least more advanced courses or no?
Yes, it also is connected to our task. So it's really, I mean, we're building them as we go, right? But we do need staff that have the bilingual skills and also the academic education degrees that is needed to be able to teach those classes. And that has been a little bit difficult, but we're getting there, you know, with also hired visiting teachers. And that has helped us a little bit. So there are some, you know, I, I, I believe, this is my belief, even if it's a regular science class in Spanish, it's rigorous. To me, that's a higher level class because it is given in another language. And students in that have to, you know, have to prove that they have that proficiency in order to be successful in those classes. Just being in a dual language class and program, I feel like it's, it's a higher level than is expected for the students. Thank you.
Went to elementary and one of the things that we even did this year was some recruitment to get more, to be interested in going into secondary in our Grow Your Own program that were, that are bilingual students. And recruiting them into areas, like a lot of them were like, I want to do language arts with social studies. And we're like, hey, math and science and science would be really cool too. So just kind of letting them know that that is a pathway that they can think about. And it doesn't mean that you didn't have to be the best in that pathway. That's a skill that they can help others who we're trying to recruit to think about that. So we're getting a few more. That is a harder area for us.
One of the requirements is for them to try the asset level during summer school because we want them to really be sure where they want to be at the beginning of their college career. And so we've had a lot of kids that have changed from elementary to secondary after going to the secondary summer program. And so, I mean, it works. Sometimes it's because you're not either, they feel like it's too, the kids are too big and they're not going to be able. But then they realize, no, I can do this. And so change.
In the document for the student voices, kind of piggybacking on what she was mentioning, there was some comments on there about wanting to see more like clubs and field trips and electives also offered in Spanish. So I wanted to give an opportunity to see if there's something in the mix for that or if there's something already available or an opportunity available for that. And also in thinking about like access to sports, I know in the past I've heard, especially from newcomer students that are like, I am learning the system, so I'm trying, and I'm a great at soccer, but the coach speaks English and the assistants speak English and everyone is like English, English. So it's kind of hard for me to try out. So I'm just wondering if you could speak on some of that.
Yeah, it has, I think we've, in our multilingual, with our multilingual staff, they have tried to help our newcomers to experience the different classes. It is hard for them, for the staffing side, but also their confidence. And feeling like, you know, because I don't, that might not be, you know, or even also supporting our staff and how to support our newcomers coming in, into their spaces as well. But I've seen a growth in trying the different, before they wouldn't even try.
Do you see, so the opportunities of having more clubs and field trips and electives in Spanish, do we see that?
It's there, we've had here and there, but that's why it's there.
Yeah.
Because that's, and that's the whole, that's the goal of creating this task force. Task force is to be able to expand and then have a goal. Like in five years, we want to see this many more open or more structures in place that support it. Currently, we don't have them to be able to say, for me to be able to say, oh yeah, we have these many in each school. It says whoever tries it and so you have it here and then you don't. So it's not a structured, an opportunity that is structured for all.
I think yes, like in terms of elective and what we prioritize, it's been, it's been more focused on the core as we've had a challenge in secondary, making sure that we're having enough classes available in Spanish for considering dual. And elective becomes like singletons in a schedule for high schools. We're also trying to make sure that what we do doesn't create restrictions within the schedule that don't allow kids access to other things too. So it's a balancing act of finding the right, so really our priority has been core and trying to make that the biggest focus, especially in areas like, like Joplin? Yeah. It's what you're saying, like trying to get more math and science because we know that's important for their, in the core. And then elective is down the road. I think what's going to be challenging, there were a lot of great ideas in this report. And as we go into a budgetary time that is very tight, we are going to really have to lean on that team to figure out what will be the priorities that we can truly accomplish. Because all of those things were amazing that they talked about. And I'm worried that we won't be able to do all of them. And hopefully this team can kind of be like, what is the worst of the worst? Do we really have our budgetary tuition that's going to be taxing? And wishing we could hire more. We've got a bunch of Grow Your Own right now that are like, oh, I'm really hoping we have jobs in the future for them in our district because that is how we change our workforce and diversify it. So it's, it's.
And that's beyond dual.
And yes, and that is, yes, just hiring in general, yes.
The other question I had, and it's probably in this task force, is I was looking at the, so the articulation guide, that was like back in two thousand seventeen when it first got implemented. And then we have our guiding principles, which is the standards and our pillars and our model. Is this like a report going to help inform changes? Like how do we improve that articulation guide? I don't know, how often do we revisit it or how has it worked throughout the years? Or has it been kind of the same since we first implemented?
We've morphed it a couple of times. We have really tried to stay as close to, to the original as possible because it's been also connected to adoption. But we've, we've morphed it based on staffing. Like for instance, if in K two, the goal is to be able to hire more bilingual teachers so kids don't have to share a teacher. Third through six, we're more open to having like the, the articulation may look a little different based on self-contained or sci-fi smooth teachers. That's how we've morphed it and given, now that we have a bunch of splits, we're also have done a little bit of a tweak there too, to be able to help them meet the needs of those teachers that are teaching.
Yeah. One thing that I just haven't seen here, and I'm only speaking because of my background in dual language and my passion as well. So I tried to be sure, but I didn't see a whole lot in the report about like language profiles. And that's like a big thing that's been on my mind lately, especially because my children go to dual. But I'm raising biracial children, right? Where English is kind of the dominant in our home, but we speak and understand Spanish really clearly, right? So those are our heritage speakers. And so just noticing how we're seeing more, the next generation being more of our heritage speakers, not so much what we were used to years ago where it's like first generation immigrants, right? Or just newcomers, like the language profiles are really like shifting, which I think pushes for some differentiation or at least pathways. Especially when I'm looking at like the data for third grade and I'm noticing like still that conversation of it being a gap when we know it's not really a gap, we know that that's just that transition phase, right? For our dual. I didn't see it on here, but I'd love an opportunity later to hear more about how, how we're looking at those pathways for our heritage speakers, you know, that especially towards that bilinguistic seal versus our students. Or even from third, Spanish is their third language.
Everything that you're saying right now was, were things that were coming up in that, yeah. The data analysis task force, because we wanted to look at all of those things, but it was really hard.
Yeah.
And so we need to improve those systems and try to be able to see those pathways. Yeah.
Another question, just give it. I'm actually typing out an email to ask you what I have, so thank you so much for your presentation, Noah.
You did such a good job talking about our program and kind of the history of where we are today. Things you should know about our SEMA's leadership. And I'm thinking too of Alfonso and Anna and other people on your team who've done this stuff. Um, you talked a little bit about pushing on publishers better their curriculum. That's important region as far as what our publishers come to our school districts with for curriculum options. Awesome. During COVID, um, our SEMA formed a coalition of folks who just demanded that there be more translated materials for online reading for kids during COVID. And that changed the online experience for kids in our region, which is awesome. Um, summer programs, all the development of the grow your own folks, the expansion of summer programs has been so huge for us. Recruiting international teachers from other countries and then making them feel like they have a place here in Hillsborough. SEMA has dinners where the international teachers come together and talk about it. Hard, working well, being here in the United States to work with our students. Um, my own students have benefited from kids, I had, that they were little kids coming up in our dual language program and then now five more teachers. So the whole like multi-generational thing is, has momentum. I wouldn't be able to without them. You saw pictures of big celebrations where families and grandparents and brothers just come together and see Ballet Poplorico and music and sing songs at Hill High usually. A big fiesta that happens to celebrate our dual program each year and that doesn't happen without your leadership. And then a technical thing you wouldn't see behind the scenes is that our SEMA led a group to change the law in Oregon so that language rights could be delivered in English or Spanish, just like we can deliver science in English or Spanish for credit on a transcript. And that allows students to demonstrate proficiency in language arts standards in English and Spanish, which pays the way for a whole bunch of kids to graduate on time who are bilingual and. Thank you for your influence in our little community.
I wanted to say thank you for the presentation because I was really excited about this one just because I wanted to learn more about the history of the dual language program. But it also unlocks this beautiful time lapse of memories and from my experience, because this program was started two years after I started Tender Garden here in HSC. And so, um, to Mark's point, when I went back to McKinney like a year or two ago to do a tour and I toured and I saw Ms. Muskins was still there and I remember her, because she's still here.
I get it.
Yeah, so she's still here, you know, teaching students and just doing the, you know, wonderful, beautiful work that she does. And then as I got into, going to more schools and it's beautiful to see classrooms being done, you know, sessions being done in Spanish. And it's just a really nice thing to see of how it's grown and progressed over the last twenty plus years. And so I just wanted to say thank you to you and to everyone who has any, you know, input and work that goes into this work. So thank you. And with that, we will go on to our next agenda item, which is our bond development update with Beth and Evan.
Um, hello everybody. I would like to introduce two of our consultants that are helping us put together our 2026 bond package. Brooke Stewart-Mocker with Turner and Towne Mihery and Evan Marola with Peter Crocker. And we just wanted to take this opportunity for those of you who aren't participating on our bond development committee. We wanted to give you an opportunity to meet with that person and to just share a little bit about how the process is going so far. We've had two out of six meetings planned for this fall. Uh, our third one is tomorrow and it's going really well. So I'm going to hand it over to Brooke and Evan and let them share a few bonds with you.
I'm just going to piggyback off of it. Last time that you were here, I think you were here two months ago, three months ago. Evan wasn't with me at the time, um, but Evan is our partner at Peter Crocker and he leads our community and BDC and our discussions as a group. And so Evan is going to lead us through what we've done so far in our BDC meetings and Beth.
Thank you everybody for the time. Excited to get to connect and guess there are any questions that come up? And so as we share, we're just going to remember some of these slides here, um, a little bit of the, of the purpose sharing. I, uh, my background is from being a teacher and administrator and program manager at the district level as well. And so we bring a lot of that, one, the bond planning process to help guide the committee and think through data in different forms and values as well to really help kind of. But I will say if you have any questions or anything, I can talk through some of the, some of the questions you might have around the process that we're going through here as well. So you'll see here that, um, the purpose of bringing that committee is really three. Um, one is to really bring legal data, help develop the, the conversation around capital needs for the district. Um, we do that by bringing together a community representative group of diverse stakeholders within that process to establish some consensus on those recommendations that's in here. And ultimately that comes in the form of recommendations to the school board. Help decide, yes, we think this looks like a great pathway to help bring forward the bond and to the public for vote and, and, and win. And so, um, you'll see on this next piece, just another way of framing that around the outcome is ultimately to come to recommendations that are in the form of a strategic capital investment plan for Hillsborough School District that the board will review and analyze and decide if we agree or disagree. So here's another representation of that process, specifically the bond development tree, also referring to three buckets here. Um, we do a continuous cycle of data gathering, making sense of that data at the group and input from the group upon that data. Uh, and we do that through a special sharing, a series of six meetings to then come up with some preliminary ideas of possible recommendations for a bond that we will then bring forward for a community to feedback and input. That will then create another round of data, maybe they'll come back to help make sense of it into the process before bringing the recommendation to the school board as well through that capital investment plan. Then the board will vote toward a strong, uh, short and long-term ability improvement. And so we want to just walk through kind of what we've covered in the first two meetings. So the first meeting was really about getting to know each other in the room, um, cultivating community, setting purpose of the group, building a shared understanding on some key data points that are completely brought into this process, such as enrollment, capacity utilization, discussions around what are the business positions of the facilities in the district and how are we talking about that? Um, and then we use that to really talk through some strategic buckets that are under consideration, uh, to bring towards the group. And we had a group discussion on these buckets. Initially feel right, what questions do we have within this bucket and what, what would we like to learn through this process in these buckets as well? So you'll see here that these buckets, um, were brought toward the group with the understanding that bonds are not just about addressing capacity and utilization within a district, they're also about addressing key assets of the district. Um, specifically to help support longevity, optimization and equality of the programs and facilities within the district. And we thought that was a really important approach, um, especially given enrollment trends and data that's coming in to really help set the groundwork for, for purpose for this committee. Um, and then collectively these recommendations come together into a unique form of a strategic capital investment plan. And one thing to call out is right now, these are all circles of equal size as we go through this process. Given projected costs, given amount of movement, given certain measures. If you think of these circles, they kind of might grow or strengthen in terms of relevance. Um, and that's something that gets refined throughout this process. As it gets brought forward to you, it's going to clearly be all equal circles. You see kind of where, where a majority is focused areas within this process following into. Um, some key outcomes that I'll just give a quick voiceover here. There was a strong energy and momentum from the group around these areas of focus in terms of strong consensus and agreement. Yeah, these feel like the right areas, given the data we see, strategic plan for the district and understanding from experiences with stakeholders in the room as well. Um, some key questions that came up, and these will go over on the next slide as well, are the, just a question of those areas. Do you have a lot of these areas mean for the district and how the district approaches these areas currently? Um, is there an opportunity to hear from experts from specifically district personnel within these areas? And then, um, how do we address these and talk about these with the understanding of, um, the district enrollment having declined recently and being projected to continue or is that being with the current environment? Um, and so we have to use that to validate the process with the group as well. Um, and so you'll see here that we shared with the group that there's going to be a deep dive into those specific topics um, to really hear from every expert within the district that better understands these areas as well. And so that's built directly in our second meeting, um, where we got a chance to hear about high-level identified potential priorities. We got to hear about high-level potential priorities regarding technology. So maybe that her team, Dave and others as well as Derek got to present and speak with the bond development committee and share some great images, uh, data and information. And then we, each in a small groups had discussions to share out, hey, based off of what you heard, what do you agree with? Are key priorities that areas to focus on? Um, and we also got to ask if there are any things from your experience that you're seeing that you didn't have to discuss today as well. And so, uh, the, yeah, so this is just another representation of what got the focus through those key areas. In terms of outcomes, individuals were happy to hear from Aida and he, as well as Derek. Um, there were happy to hear from some of the others in youth, which is awesome. Um, there was general consensus and alignment within the group, so we'll show representation here. But there was a lot of consensus, um, in terms of sharing from experience that, yes, do you feel like the right priorities that are brought forward? Do you feel worth delving into further to try to understand, hey, what does, what does this look like and what is the problem? So recommendations for bond. Um, and then there was, there were some great questions that were asked, um, to really help us as we prepare for the next phase, which is getting community input to say, hey, some, some areas around technology are building in systems. We want to hear some more information to understand that rationale to make sure we're on the same page. Because there's a variety of levels of experience within those areas within the room as we'll run into a problem. Um, so it just really helps highlight, hey, let's really work on this rationale to, um, make sure that we build a strong shared understanding to get as much engagement as possible and put as possible on the process. So you'll see here, this is just a representation of some of the, um, priorities that were shared. And so coming from each of these meetings, we'll be getting to hear from each of the small groups or the larger group. What are the priorities, where are they being articulated, how's the rationale being shared? So that we can continually revise these and use, um, to get from a large funnel down to very specific, that's, hey, when we're talking about really optimizing and supporting where the district is and looking towards this next bond cycle. Here's what we're, what we're really looking to do and, and why that matters. And that, that process will get reiterated in our meeting. Here from Career and College Pathways, I get a chance to talk about extracurriculars, um, as well as certain other needed projects for the district as well. So that process will be reiterated, reiterated for us. And then as we move towards the fifth meeting, we'll get an update on. Here's, here's what the group consensus is starting to look like at the time. Um, we'll get a chance to address any questions that came up within some of the specific areas and get to look at some general pricing and fiscal impact information to say, okay, this is what we're looking at. This is generally in, in high-level planning dollars, but projected out for inflation. Um, what, 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 what muddy reach we're looking at and what the potential impact is when we ask for that from the community. Um, and then the last one we're going to do is go over the community and the process, um, talk through the one of the three potential. Give a review, what role of the group has created in programs of that like.
This is fascinating. Um, it's all good and I'm wondering, when you do meet with the commu, with the community, uh, are you prepared to, I hate to say defend us, that's almost what it is. We're looking at declining enrollment and yet we're asking for more money to do some of the things that we have to still do, right? So I, I'm just wondering, curious as to how we're going to, um, structure that argument for the community to help them understand the importance of additional money in order, not additional, but sustained.
Fond renewal?
Investment, yes, sustained and can I say that sustained investment? Um, so that they understand that, yeah, but you're losing more students. No, 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 you can't think of it that way. So I'm just wondering, are you prepared to discuss that as well with, with the community?
Good question. Short answer, yeah. Um, the longer answer is saying that with the team we have, between the steering committees, the belt committee itself, as well as some marketing experts support, we'll have a chance to really talk about how we talk about the rationale behind these, what that package looks like and we'll be able to ask questions in these initial phases as they get shared. Statistically, where does it, where do you require, that will get framed in more of a litmus test format to really help us inform in thinking what we're seeing to say, okay, like, yeah, the rationale continues for those reasons or here's where we really need to get a lot clearer, be more context building and really think about how it's being shared. Um, that will really inform what we bring to you all as this recommendation. So absolutely on our radar, we know it's a tricky balance. And we also know that a lot of what the district needs at the time are, are integral, um, regardless of enrollment growing or declining as well. So we're, um, yeah, I understand the complexity and want to make sure we get as many more members as we can to help strategically about, address that complexity in a way that.
Thank you.
Great question.
I mean, even declining enrollment, three hundred and eighty, we're, we're sub, three seven buildings, we all have rooms. We have seventeen thousand students that we need to provide safe, secure places and enriching programs, so.
That's the key message, and we just want to make sure we can really get clear about how to share that in the most impactful way to get the most engagement and support from our community. One of the greatest, he's under team, every building has a core envelope that we need to keep track of. Whatever document is absolutely running in much in the way that we report the district agenda mission. I was feeling here, what to expect from, um, is before we go into that community input, deep that process, you'll receive from us, um, a word certified representation of what is it that we're bringing to the community and how? And what are we looking for in those data points and clarity on that process and what that looks like? But we'll be sharing that with you all, um, so you can know, hey, here's the progress on where we are. Here's our next step as we build this out, just to help share that as a checkpoint there.
Sorry, another question. Will you be utilizing, uh, the excellent data from the last bond where we really came down to the, and we did everything we said we were going to do? And I mean, we followed up to the letter and I'm hoping that that, I'm hoping that you'll be able to use that to give some confidence to the community if we come back and say, hey, we, we have, we have to do this again. Um, and I think it's really important that we get the community to understand that this isn't the last time we'll do this. This is a cycle, it's, it's, and this will have to happen again and maybe another seven years, eight years, ten years. It just, I, I, I want us to be, my desire is that we be as transparent and preparatory, if you will, to the community so that they understand that this is, you know, we did it once and we did it awesomely. And we're going to come back and do it again and we're going to do that awesomely too. And there may be a third time coming.
Yeah. Information on bringing rock over time. For example, with, if security were outlined, these are the, the pieces that were in the twenty-one point six million in two thousand seventeen. And then here's what we have as apps, here's how they relate. Um, and one of the pieces I got from experience that gets brought to that process to your question is like, here's, here's why. we ask on this technical piece, and also understanding the transparency piece, there's value in being able to share your things we learned, and here's why that matters for us to be able to address right now. And so, absolutely appreciate that question, and that's something that we're absolutely bringing in. And I think on parallel process with that, not, not ignoring and treating that as something we have to bring.
Will there be an opportunity to get information in Spanish to our Spanish speaking? And then, yeah, that's great, and of course, of course you are. And then, will our PACs have an opportunity to get information specifically for them? Like, or are they just kind of a part of that community piece?
So, we, part of the Turner and Townsend team, they brought with them ISO Marketing. Anthony believes owns that, and he is a heritage Spanish speaker, like that term. And his specialty is engagement. And so, what we really want him to focus on is that engagement, and I believe he and Francesca have already spoken, and we want to utilize that PAC structure. It's just kind of a natural opportunity for him to join in on some of those meetings to provide information, gather feedback, and make sure that's back to the Bond Development Committee. And then, of course, every community meeting that we hold will have him there, able to talk to folks in Spanish, so.
And student voice as well, would that be?
Yeah, we've got, we've got four or five students on the committee. Yeah, all three, all three of our student reps signed up, and then Jesse J. Alonso also signed up for the committee. So, yeah, got good, good student reps.
I also wanted to say, one thing that might not have been immediately clear, but I think it speaks to all of us, is that when Saida and Dave presented theirs, they also brought Maya Hawking with them to talk about energy efficiency and opportunities to build efficiency into our projects. And the fact that we are going to be looking at everything we do through that lens, the opportunity to access rebate dollars or partnerships or ways to build in that efficiency into the design so it costs us less upfront and possibly pays dividends down the road. So, that's, that's an element that we've explored already, which is exciting from a transparency standpoint. I don't know if you want to go to a, a web browser and just type in hillford-bond.org, but that's our online site that we set up for the 2017 bond. And it doesn't have a lot of new information on it yet, however, that is where we are posting all of the meeting information for the Bond Development Committee. So, you can go there and find not only a video of the meeting, but all the meeting slides, the minutes for each of those meetings, so it's fully accessible to the public. Mostly, that's just been a nice resource for the Bond Development Committee members in case they weren't able to be there or just want to refresh their memory on something that happened in the meeting. They have that opportunity to, to go and check it out there, so.
There's a dash, it's hillford.
Yeah, hillford dot org. Sorry. There you go. So, yeah, if you click on the menu, and then the top thing is Bond Development Committee, and, but just click the title, the Bond Develop-, yeah, the, click that.
Well, Beth, you've morphed this into the current bond, and you're just going to...
Well, it's, yeah, so we're in progress. We need to move all the 2016, there's so much content from 2017. It's hard to move it because then you just won't have much at all. So, it's like this weird hybrid phase where we haven't done a ton of work on this bond development yet. So, we're keeping up some of that 2017, but once we have a little more content, we'll shove that all into more of an archive situation, and then how just everything on that site will be. And we're also, one of our consultants, we've also been for like a logo refresh, kind of a branding and logo refresh. So, this site will have a different logo and different colors. And so, once we get all that in place, then we'll make a bigger splash about rolling it out. And of course, it becomes more important as we transition into the actual, well, some of you will transition into the advocacy phase, but when we're, we've actually approved the package, we're working to get it on the ballot for November, and we really want that awareness of what's in this package and why should I vote for it? So, that's what this site will help us, help us around all that information.
Are you back in December, or is it like, are we getting the board to update the report or whatever?
I am hoping I can be back in December.
And so, that's the summary after these meetings. I keep saying, I love the 2017 process, it went great, I was here for that. We'd be discussing sort of package one, two, three, like how much?
Yeah, no, by then, we will have, we'll have packages. My guess is, and I don't know this for sure, but my guess is, we'll probably have a core of what we know needs to happen. And then, it's probably going to be one, two, or three, like bolt-ons. What's your favorite bolt-on to this main package is probably how that's going to roll, and that's where it's going to be helpful to get input from the community, like, yeah. I don't imagine there being two, like completely different packages. That doesn't make a lot of sense, but.
Yeah, last time was, if we could afford turf fields with light, if we can. Or, and there was some stuff that couldn't make it, but we ended up doing it, it's got a premium, yeah.
Yeah, and you can see some of that historical information on the bond site still, so, yeah.
I wanted to ask if it's possible to link the bond site that you have, the website you have going on to the Hillborough District website, if there's any way to make it more accessible?
Oh, it's, it's on there.
On there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to add too, just so we don't miss it, November 18th, we have invited Piper to come. Back in from Oxford County about a week ago. So, we'll come in and do a few overview of the, of the, get an idea of that ahead of the December meeting. Set a better range, I know we've been a little fludgy on that because we're waiting for those property tax rolls to come in and look at where interest rates are, but we'll, we'll have them in here for you to ask questions from.
So, the November Board meeting, we should know about what a replacement, the amount of funding a replacement, a straight replacement would.
Just one thing that was on my mind, because I went to the, by the way, amazing job. I was in the virtual, and I felt very included. And that doesn't always happen, so I appreciate that. One thing that I think would be helpful for me is to, and maybe it's just like, what district do we compare ourselves to? So, as we're thinking about these packages, like, one of the conversations that we were having in our small group was like, if I'm a family and I'm looking to enroll my kid in a district, like, oh, this, this school or this district has technology to offer, and this one doesn't, right? And so, that kind of played into that conversation of do we keep Chromebooks or not? So, as we're thinking of those packages, you know, to think like, and this is how we compare to other districts comparable to ours, I think would be super helpful.
I will say that one of the feedback pieces that we received, I think it was in meeting one, was that there's a really strong desire to be a competitive district. So, and so, as we're working through, I'm working on a matrix in the background. It's a very large spreadsheet. And one of the scoring criteria is, does this project, if it's a group or field, lighting, safety, security upgrade, is that going to make us competitive?
For comparison, Westland Wilsonville is 9,000, and they have $190 million bond in two weeks or whatever.
The next closest to our site is North Clackamas. That would be our closest competitor right now. It's size-wise. And the line is close too.
Hazel? Remember which one, how to, Darren College Council, uh, student.
So, what we're talking about in all of the things that we bring up in these meetings are things and not people. So, we have to, with the capital construction bond, invest in things that have longevity, structures, technology fits in that category, but it can't pay for staffing. So, the things we're looking at in our sharing college pathways section that we're going to be talking about tomorrow night are going to be things that relate to the infrastructure of the programs that we already have in place, making enhancements to things like focus farm, or fire science program, or middle shop, or arts media and communications. The things that they need to do those programs well are the types of things that are, things that are best there.
It might be helpful to consider, if you taught us well, if I remember correctly, bonds are for physical needs, and levies can then buy people. This is a bond. So, the next thing is to discuss whether we're actually levying so we can do the kinds of things that you just mentioned. Does that help a little bit? Did I get it right, Beth?
Well, thank you. See you tomorrow. It was discussion time, and we'll start with our student representatives, and you can, Hazel, you can go.
Okay, the presentations today, I think we're...
Oh, Hazel, we can't hear you.
Um, I don't really have much to say, I think the presentations today were really amazing. Very good, so, and again, thank you, I feel so supportive with like questions and ideas.
Um, I really, really, really appreciate when you come to us and you say hi, especially for us student reps. I think it's a lot more comfortable to ask questions, and it'd be a learning environment for us. So, I'd like to thank you all again.
Just a couple of deep and shout-outs. Last year, we started the hashtag NotAtMySchool campaign. The goal was to use the same hateful speech and words that were being used by students in school, and to be really clear about what adults who are here who are students base in our schools related to hate speech. And I just want to say that that's going really well this spring, according to me, because I get hit up on the streets by parents who say, thank you for the work you're doing in HSD. When I go to schools, they say, you're the guy in that video. I think it's really important that we watch what we made in the statements that we take to our community. Training of providing staff, students have been trained and communicated to via morning meetings and advisory periods and just, I believe in school, in classes. We have increased bias response reporting and increased response to those reports. And I've been heard that states like Minnesota and New York are looking at our videos and trying to ask Francesca how we got here. And I really appreciate the community-based work that you've done with your team to figure out how we get our arms around students and their experience and engage families on the topic. I also want to give a shout-out to Brooke and Beth with the, the things behind the scenes with our strategic plan that you might not see are the deep dives that we do with principals related to accountability cycles and the data that we look at in our K-12 admin meeting. We have principals working on their school improvement plans and sitting side by side with each other, working as professional learning communities, looking at student level and class level data regarding literacy, math, attendance, whatever it is that they need to achieve their school improvement plan in service to our larger strategic plan. So, as the board hears those quarterly reports on our strategic plan, just know that there's this giant architecture underneath that that we're carrying on. On October 7th, we have one of those big data summits. Related to that, next week, we're going to have Cognia visit us to do a district accreditation. We were the first district in Oregon to be district accredited. Most districts have their high schools by themselves, which is very cumbersome, and schools go through a very long process of becoming accredited so that their transcripts matter and their students can qualify for NPA and all those other things. In HSD, we do accreditation as a K-12 system so that we're in good standing in the high school community and the high-level school district. And also, by the way, our high schools are accredited. So, Brooke and her squad have put together months of work into that visit where we have folks from around the country who visit our school district and really hold up a mirror so that we can see who we are in areas that we're strong and where we can improve. So, thanks in advance for folks who are involved in that. And a special shout-out to all the directors here at the table for spending extra time with Scott and me talking deeply about our budget situation and politics in Oregon. Behind the scenes, I really appreciate the conversations that we're having and how much he's invested in.
Uh, sure, had an opportunity to go to Rosedale and have lunch today. I, I did have the international option for the hand-rolled B and cheese burrito. I put my sticker on the poster saying that I did from Spain. Looking forward to hopefully tomorrow and Thursday as well, so I think, I think I've heard I'll see someone be there. Always great to be in a school, it's just, I mean, it's always, and having a seven-year-old ask you, how old are you? I'm older than my mom and dad. Excited for the OSBA conference coming up. I wrote, indicated that our students will be joining us, and that's always impressive, so. All the details, I'll let you see. Oh, we did the OSBA regional roundtable or whatever. So, look, look for, it sounds like we're going to have the legislator event again at some point, maybe January. So, you know, no date to hold yet, but be thinking about meeting with legislators from Washington County in January.
Yeah, um, yeah, full swing in, in October. I think we're all getting really busy, so I want to thank all of Cabinet for all of the behind-the-scenes work that you've been doing to, to get us ready for meetings. Appreciate, really appreciate the partnership from Brooke and Evan, your team, and with Beth on all of the bond work. I can tell you're really deep diving into HSD and getting to know us really well, so we really appreciate that. I am also looking forward to National School Lunch Week. Also had the opportunity to attend our Hispanic Heritage Celebration, so that was fantastic. Brooke and Francesca, and our seminar was there, and we got to see Travis dance. Wait, I was saying, it was a, it was a, it was a very, very, very fun event. And, and it also came on the heels of the Hillsborough Public Library's Hispanic Heritage Art Exhibition, where our own student Nicole's art is going to be displayed. So, there's still plenty of time, you can go to Brookwood to the second floor, just go up the stairs, and you can see Nicole's pieces, they're lovely, as well as the pieces of all the other Hispanic artists that are displayed. And also wanted to say that Mark and I had a fantastically warm and productive first mentorship meeting with Hazel, and got to meet her parents too, and you can tell why she is just such a superstar because her parents are awesome as well. But looking forward to also getting to know Jafaleen and Nicole. So, please don't hesitate ever to come up to any of us because we're all here to be your mentors all year long. So, thank you so much for all your input during the meetings. That's it from me.
Um, yeah, Hispanic Heritage, great work, awesome emptying solo and great dancing skills. No, it was great, it was, um, just awesome, amazing, great turnout. It was great. No, it was great, it was, um, just awesome, amazing, great turnout, it was great to see so many cabinet and district staff members show up and support, it was, it was beautiful. Thank you, Scott, for that meeting, I feel like financial conversations are always so hard to grasp, and you make it really easy to understand and make sense, so thank you, I appreciate that, looking forward to more of those. Thank you as well, like I said, I felt very included virtually, and I, you know, someone who has led committees, it is not easy to get consensus and come up with those packages, and so it's going to be a challenge, but I have complete faith and trust that you will get us what we need. You seem so very organized, and like Katie said, so into what our needs are, and I appreciate that. I also just wanted to do a little bit of like advocacy on dual language, because we talked a lot about that, for those of you who don't know, I started my teaching career as a Spanish immersion teacher in PPS, taught that for several years, and then came to Hillsborough as a dual-language teacher as well, and so I've had the chance to see how the program here has grown so much, and how our demographics have also evolved, and so I'm looking forward to, I mean, this is not going to happen, I'm not going to manifest it, but I worry that with politics right now, that bilingual education is going to be targeted at some point, not going to happen, but that being said, I feel like it's just a call for all of us to just get more informed on dual language, bilingual education, so that we're ready to speak to the needs and the why it's just such an amazing thing, I mean, we saw the data, we heard the outcomes, my kids are benefiting, your kids benefited, so many of our children are benefiting, so that, and, and also, you know, we're, we are a multilingual district, and dual language is a part of that, right? And so that means we're all a part of the dual-language program, so I'm looking forward to hearing also more about our English plus classrooms, because sometimes they get forgotten, and they're part of our dual-language programs as well. In our dual-language schools, our English plus classrooms end up being cohorts, because that's how it is, right? They end up kind of moving together, which creates high needs and challenging behavior sometimes, and so I'm hoping that we can have a conversation about how we are ensuring to include all of our students in that dual-language ecosystem, community. But, yeah, just, it's not going to happen, but I do think it's very important that we are on top of all of that, so that we're ready to respond to, to whatever criticism or challenges that may come about bilingual education.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for all the presentations and all the information and all the work that goes, you know, behind all of that presentation, so that we can get informed and learn as we go. I also wanted to say, I had fun at HSF, that run walk...
Oh, yeah.
Martin, Katie, and Beth and Travis. That was a fun thing, that I dragged my brother and my cousin to, you know? It was, but I have to say, to clear, unbeknownst to me, I was following the lady in front of me, and was sort of, kind of took the shortcut.
Whoa.
Around.
No, no, you passed. Oh, I was like, yeah, I wondered how you beat him.
I know. It's all fantastic. You can't leave me behind, because I didn't know where you went, because, you know, why. I cheated, I was like, but that, sorry.
Ready at the end?
No. No, it wasn't towards the end, it was like towards the beginning.
Towards the end, I'm like, are we going, huh?
No, no, but I know what you're talking about, because then...
Wait, wait, our board chair cheated.
Hey, I, he didn't accept a medal, okay. The child that beat all of us.
Like ten?
But no, sorry, it was just not me, there's people behind me. I started running, you became ravenous, and I was waiting to go, cutting in, and I was like, my sister was like, see, that's what you guys did. See, that's why Erin kind of gave me a look like... Sorry, Beth, you touched...
It's okay, it's okay.
And then I also had a conversation about a week, week ago with another fellow elected official, and they were looking through our website, and they're like, oh, we've been talking to student representatives, and they found the Sabine, and then they just, you know, just, we're saying all the most wonderful things about you and all the, you know, volunteer work that you have done. Anyhow, and with that, we're just going to end this meeting at seven oh five.